Gail Kuzickowski.
Here.
Alderman Kerkowski, Eric Skuse, Alderman Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzickowski.
Here.
Okay, would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Gosh, you want to lead us?
......................................................
Item 3, approval of minutes from 9/3, if everybody would please take a look. There's no omissions, errors, corrections, motion.
Kuzickowski makes a motion to approve the minutes from September 3, 2019. Kuzickowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Thank you. Apologize for the delay of the start of the meeting. We did have to wait to get a quorum here and in all fairness, what I would like to do is move item 7 up before the presentation, just as a courtesy to the people out there. So if we could proceed with item 7. So Alderman, if you'd please take a look. And we'll move that on. Andrew, you got...
Start with Ted.
Oh, Ted. When you're ready, Ted, give us a briefing.
Sure. All right, well, this year is the last year of our trash and recycle contract. It will expire on December 31st. We did initially put together another contract and were intending to go out to bid until we started looking at some of the recycle cost figures and some of the figures that other communities were seeing. Based on that, we had a conversation with Advanced Disposal because we do have a something in our contract that does allow us to negotiate with them for a two-year extension. We got some prices and we went back and forth a little bit with negotiation and although our numbers for the recycle contract are significantly higher than the 2% CPI that the contract says, after speaking with the Office of Recycling and Grants from the state of Wisconsin, we are not unique to this. They're seeing these all over. We feel that the numbers that we have gotten on both the recycling and the trash contract, which are listed here on the fiscal impact section of this council report are fair. And we think that going for an extended, like a five-year contract, there's too much unknown in the market right now and feel that we would be best off going with the two-year contract until the recycle kind of industry maybe resolves some of its issues or maybe it doesn't. But we think right now this would be the best for us. For right now, in addition to that, we also negotiated a price to retain all of the carts for the recycle. We currently own all of our own trash ones and with the pricing we have received from Advanced, it would boil down to about $2.88 per cart to own those. We feel that in the future, the fact that we would have our own would maybe give us a little bit of an edge on our future contract. The fact that even if we did get a different provider, they would not have to switch out all of the carts, that they would all be owned by the City of Oak Creek. Again, like I'm saying, we think that this is a fair number. We're not thrilled with the increase. I know nobody is, but we certainly do think this is a fair number. I actually had asked Jason Johnson, who's in the audience right now from Advanced, if you had any additional questions for Advanced. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Mayor. If you don't mind, I'd really like to hear firsthand from the industry source here kind of what's going on that's inducing these recycling increases. And as Ted had mentioned, and I'm sure Mr. Johnson will confirm as well, you know, these are not unique. Ted cited some different communities or the Office of Recycling and at the DNR. I've checked around with, you know, neighboring communities, whether they are looking at increases from John's disposal or waste management or Advanced. It's pretty universal if you're not locked into a contract right now and you're looking at renewals, you're seeing 30-plus percent increases in recycling. So it's not unique. It's a bitter pill to swallow. I think Ted covered that, but it's not unique to us. And I just ask you, sir, to kind of describe to us and educate us a little bit on that.
Sure. Good evening. Jason Johnson with Advanced Disposal. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Ted and the Administrator, everything they've said is accurate. This has kind of been a perfect storm boiling in terms of the recycling industry. One of the biggest things that have set us this in motion was about two years ago, China developed what's called their National Sword Campaign. In essence, what that did was ban all recyclables coming into their country from the United States. Has nothing to do with the current China trade wars. It had, just really simply, their economy is now large enough that they don't need our materials. And once that shut off, it's really now supply and demand. America is overloaded with recyclables. And, you know, the younger generations, we've all, it's been boiled into our head, recycle, recycle, recycle. I'm pro-recycling, but there has to be a market. And right now, the market is not there. When you look at paper, when you look at cardboard, and the big one is plastic, we are just inundated with plastic. And you see that in the news now with banning plastic straws at various spots. There is just so much plastic out there. It's not feasible or possible to recycle at this point. Even aluminum cans. There was an article in the Wall Street Journal about six months ago, aluminum can recycling now, basically they can only turn them into aluminum cans, and they cannot be profitable enough to continue to do that. At one time, they were able to use some of that aluminum, make car parts, airplane parts, et cetera. They're not buying that type of material to do that anymore. A lot of it has to do with the global economy, technology. Raw products are still making, at this time, really better products. So they're purchasing the raw products and building aluminum, steel, all of it, with oil down. That's kind of the world we're at right now. And with the plastics, again, there's just so much out there. It used to kind of run hand in hand. As oil pricing went up, the value of plastics went up. We're not seeing that anymore. Another thing, and one thing we're going to work on with our municipal partners, is to clean up the recycling. I mentioned earlier, we've all got in our mind, you got to recycle, you got to recycle. I used to be the one that, when in doubt, throw it in the recycling. Don't do that. Do not do that. Put in items that are recyclable. And that's basically the items in your refrigerator, okay? Pizza boxes, don't put those in there. They're cardboard. Do not put them in there. Glass is a big issue right now. It costs us right around $90 a ton to recycle glass. And we need to start rethinking recycling and more of the reuse. In the old, you know, 20 years ago when I was in college, you made sure every beer bottle you kept track of because you got $2.40 back. We need to reuse stuff. We can't just put the glass in there. Glass still has to be sorted. When recycling started out, some of us are old enough to remember, clears, browns, greens, it still is that way. Okay? So when it all gets put into your bin, it has to get sorted. So a lot of those bottles break up, a lot of it gets embedded into the papers. We want to recycle the paper. We get lower value for that. In the past, when you look at your bill and even now you see the pricing, we were able to subsidize some of those services with the value of the commodity. At this time, you're not able to. I'm not sure if Ted's a member of it, but a lot of public works directors are members of Industry Magazine. You'd be surprised how many communities, not in Wisconsin, but nationwide, that are getting rid of curbside recycling because it's that expensive. Now, Wisconsin, we have a law, you have to recycle. So I don't see that coming in the future, but I think the state does need to look at this. For those of you that remember when the tax, the landfill tax went from $5.90 to $13, our municipal partners were some of our biggest advocates to say, where are we going to come up with this money? When it comes to recycling, I think the state needs to really look at it. And again, we're pro-recycling. We don't want that material into the landfill. Our landfill will fill up eventually. Nobody wants that in their backyard. So we want to be, you know, we want to sponsor recycling, we want to promote it, but we just want to tell the truth that it's an expense. We just aren't getting paid for it anymore like we used to. It is literally an expense at this point. But that's about all I have. But, you know, clean recycling is one of the big things. Again, I kind of glossed over that, but please make sure we're following the guidelines. We're going to send some more information out. People do what's called wish cycling. They throw material in there that they think it is, but it's not. And it still has to get sorted. We have machines that do that, but there's still a human component to it, and that drives a lot of the value down as well.
Any questions? All is up. Yeah?
Just quickly, are you having a landfill, a lot of your kind of mixed recycling now?
We can't. By law, once it's into that recycling truck, it has to go to the recycling plant and get sorted. When recycling was dual stream, which was basically your glass, plastic, aluminums in one and your papers in the other, we were seeing about 5% to 6% contamination rates. Right now, we're seeing anywhere between 13% and 20% because people just hope it gets recycled. Plastic bags, those, we are going to become very diligent on that. If we see them, we will probably start tagging the carts that we won't take it. Because if we're rejected at the recycling facility, we have to figure that out, but in the same token, they are now charging us $150 a ton. I can put in the landfill for about $45 a ton. So it's, and again, it's the buyers of the material. They just, they want really, really clean material, and there's so much of it, they can be rather choosy right now.
Do you have some kind of...
Yep, we're putting more and more together. We're waiting to hear back from one of our primary buyers of what they may update a couple things. The Municipal Solid Waste Association is working with some lobbyists at the state level to see about getting some concessions. I don't think that'll happen, but we'll be sending out more information in early October.
Chris?
Alderman Kuzickowski. Mr. ... Couple of things, Jason, or Andrew, Ted. When in doubt, throw it out. I think that, you know, I think even at my house, even at my house, there's sometimes a disagreement on what you should be recycling. And I, so however we can push that out, the information, and I know it's out there, but we just need to get it out there again. The carts, are they interchangeable? So let's say we have another recycling company and waste collection, are the carts interchangeable with other trucks?
Yes.
And then when would we start rolling them out within the city? Or Oak Creek residents?
There are already... We already have carts.
Out there, yeah.
Any other questions? Mike?
Are there any communities out there that have gone to a longer period of pickup, like a three-week pickup?
In terms of the recycling materials, instead of every other week?
What I'm thinking is...
The city of Milwaukee right now has, it's a hybrid. It's basically every three weeks. I don't, well, and I haven't lived there for five years, so they may have changed it, but they did have it that way. But in some of their communities, the attitude was a little more pro-recycling. They wanted to increase the frequency. We found that every other week is probably the best. I've actually had more communities inquire about going weekly. You know, it's such a dramatic price increase. They don't really want to spend that money, quite frankly, but we've actually had a couple communities, they're smaller, more rural areas, they're looking at going every other week on the trash, especially in the winter. For those that go to Florida, a lot of those communities have garbage pickup twice a week, and then when it's cooler in their winter, they scale back to once a week, but we have some looking at going every other.
Yeah, what I was thinking was, I mean, if you do succeed in the education of what actually goes in those bins, people are putting less product in there, three-week, what might make sense down the road in the future. Maybe not immediately, but...
Yeah, I think with the type of materials that go on the recycling, you start thinking of laundry jugs, milk jugs, larger bottles. There's so much airspace in recycling when you think of throwing your garbage bags. It might be heaping, but in two days, it compacts on itself, whereas the recycling, we even call them rigids. There's a lot of airspace and people aren't smashing down their boxes. We kind of call it the Amazon effect. And then with like the large plastic jugs, I think once every three weeks would be not enough. Where I lived in Milwaukee, we had that service. Mine was overflowing by the time the third week hit, always. Me and my wife and son and daughter.
Anything? Probably more for Ted than just the comment overall, so I can do, I can do that now or wait until Jason's done. I have nothing for you. Jason, I'm in total agreement. Culture's changing and we should be a leader in it going forward. And education, it's hard to change a culture, but we're going to have to because we've got to solve this problem.
Yeah, and sometimes we get a little bit of a black eye. Like I mentioned, you're a garbage company, you don't want to recycle, but we have recycling plants. We have one in Wanakee, so I mean, a lot of the material we send there, we send stuff to other spots, but it's not just us. It really is nationwide at this time, and we want to, we want to do the right thing as well, but we want to be honest and transparent.
I agree, and I think most people think they're saving the planet, so they throw everything in that recycle bin. And you just came up with just a lot of examples of what's not being recycled these days. People don't realize that. So I think it'll be eye-opening if we roll this all out educationally for the citizens. Steve?
I just want, the question I have is the current residents that have advanced disposal bins, are they going to be replaced with City of Oak Creek bins or is it going to transfer ownership of them?
No, they're going to transfer ownership of the ones that are out there now.
Okay. And I get my comment is, you know, there were a couple of rough patches that I had with my subdivision, notwithstanding one resident, but there were some issues that was adequately resolved by contacting Advanced Disposal. But what was really kind of sad was the, I call it the selfishness of some of our citizens with regards to the snowstorm followed by the Arctic polar vortex that you suffered. I was in Florida. And Leslie did a great job of putting that out on Facebook, and you guys, you know, I think suffered immensely with telephone calls, so why aren't you picking up my trash when it's 40 degrees below zero, which, but you guys worked hard to take care of that issue with the overflow that we had. Some residents didn't have stuff picked up for like four weeks, so, but I just wanted to, I guess, compliment you guys for working through a difficult situation back then. Ted was involved, Leslie. And it goes back to what you're talking about tonight, too. Leslie can do a great job with educating people on Facebook and stuff with what you can and can't throw out, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, I guess we can go to motion.
We'll move to approve a two-year extension to the refuse and recycling contract with Advanced Disposal.
Kuzickowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman and Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go back to the original agenda, back to item 4, and that's presentation for our street lighting capital improvement plan and feasibility study for an LED conversion.
Thanks, sorry about that. I wanted to get some water here and drink my initial allotment.
Yeah, it's, do anything you need to do today.
And I see I'm live, so I will kick this off. Well, I got to tell you, it's been about 20 months in the making for this initiative that's contained in our strategic action plan, which was adopted in June of 17. We've had a lot of hard work done by the members of the policy team, which are on this slide that I'm showing you right now. Ted Johnson, his staff, Jennifer Eldridge, Steve Conkey, Jeff Lynch, Matt Sullivan, Andy Wilken, and we actually had a citizen, one of two of our SAP teams that we had a citizen member on, Mr. Dennis Walder, an Oak Creek resident, was on the team as well. Honorable mention goes to Mike Simmons, city engineer in the audience. Mike did a lot of work, as did Matt Sullivan, with the We Energies, kind of the We Energies lighting issues that you'll see and we'll talk about a little bit more. And I'd also like to thank Josh Elaine. Josh is our management intern. If you hadn't, if you haven't had the opportunity to meet Josh, thank Josh for putting together the PowerPoint for us this evening. So again, in our strategic action plan document, this brief summary just tries to encapsulate and summarize in a very brief fashion for you, I know you like brief. The large 20-plus page document that's in your packet, that is, we're kind of positioning that as a draft analysis right now because as you'll see, this is a check-in with you. We need some guidance. We want to have a discussion on some directional policy items so we can kind of finish this out. And if you so choose, based on what you hear and what we discuss, to move forward to project implementation, then we will do so. It has a lot of merit. But in our SAP, you see the following objectives. I won't go down the list, but in addition to this LED conversion, which was kind of simple, you can kind of do a payback model. We've had three different looks at a payback model for LED. We also looked at smart lighting technologies as well as, this really turned into, as you see with the name of the white paper itself or the analysis itself, really turned into a street lighting CIP, Capital Improvement Plan as well, because we've identified some things that are really aside and apart from the LED conversion that we need to address. So why are we looking at this? I mean, I think very conceptually, you know, number one is the financial savings that we'll go over, you know, 1A, 1B, 1C energy savings and low environmental impact, lowering our environmental impact, our carbon footprint specifically. And then you also get, with the technology as it's advanced over the last decade or more, you really do see a great improvement in terms of visibility and safety. And again, with those smart capabilities, there's a lot of additional, you know, opportunities, I should say, to enhance what the actual apparatus can do for a community. And you'll see some of those examples. So just to give you kind of wow you with some facts, this LED conversion would save just on the city-owned lights, and you'll get through, as we go through this, you'll see there's this issue we have to grapple with of the city-owned lights that we own and just pay for electricity, and then the We Energies-owned lights, which we pay a per month per pole cost to enjoy. The LED conversion for just the city-owned lights would potentially save us about $135 or so, $1,000 annually. So that's, that's really good for that number one prong, which is the financial savings. But also, some of the statistics that Ted was able to uncover was, you know, some of the environmental and leadership, stewardship things that we want. That's the equivalent, that energy savings, the energy output from that, or the reduction of energy, powers 51.2 homes, or to give you an idea of the carbon footprint, that's about one car driving 1.16 million miles a year. So, kind of cool. I sandwiched in, in this presentation, the conclusions and next steps, kind of the guidance we want from you, and put those up front and in the back because I wanted you to have an idea of what we sought from the council this evening as we went through the presentation. So I will just go through these very quickly, and then in the end, we will discuss them in more detail. Any questions, concerns you have on the draft as a group? We'll have a, we'll have a subsequent presentation at your October 15th council meeting regarding a analysis we commissioned with a group called Public Administration Associates that is a detailed treatise, if you will, on the option of a special charge to pay for street lighting operations and maintenance. That was also a potential funding option in our CIP funding analysis that we gave you last summer. So we're kind of going to really educate the council on what that is and statutorily how that works, and if that's something you want to pursue further. Understand the need and importance of replacing direct berry poles. Get council direction as to whether we want to take on a proactive approach as part of this project or a reactive approach to burying of those direct, replacing those direct berry poles. That's important because the direct berry pole issue and replacing those, and Ted will talk a little further about the kind of the issues with that, that really isn't, can't fairly include that in the cost benefit analysis of just the LED conversion because that's one of those capital improvement measures that are kind of over here. You can't just fold that into an LED conversion project and expect that you're going to come out looking good in that. There's other issues that we'll get to, like wiring and some substation work, cabinet work. Get a better understanding of the We Energies conversion costs and payback. We'll go over this, too. Really determine, have the council give us direction on it. If lighting and LED uniformity and more, a longer payback on the We Energy side of things is something we want, can we make an adequate business case to do that, or should we be a little more selective and pick and choose kind of areas of We Energies lights to convert? Finalize council approach as, council approach as the scope of project options, cost items 1 through 5, you'll see that in one second. Again, once we determine where the council and the city would like to go with We Energies, we'll produce then a kind of an overall payback model that shows the city-owned lights and the We Energies-owned lights in the LED conversion model. Identify the preferred funding alternative and begin planning the project if you so choose. And then, of course, any other ideas or action steps that the council discusses tonight or things in the future. So again, the summary of project costs, kind of the menu, right? Number one, we have just converting the We Energies lights to LED, two, city-owned lights to LED, three, direct berry poles, four and five are some of those other system upgrades that maybe had some deferred maintenance on that we need to address. You can see that the overall project for, if we were to do everything, is a $4.2 million project, but as you can see with item number three there, almost $2.1 million of that is the direct buried pole replacement. Those aren't immediate or imminent issues, but we know that over time, they're going to be issues. So we'll have a discussion about how we want to handle that. So you're looking at, if you want to do just a straight LED conversion and then take on a few, you know, $175,000 worth of other system upgrades, a $2.1 million project all the way up to a $4.2 million project if we want to tackle those direct buried poles in a proactive manner. As you see, there's 791 direct buried poles there to the left. So our current situation, there are 2,920 city-owned light poles in the community. The number to the north of that, if you will, 3449, accounts for those that have dual fixtures on, you know, a singular pole. So we actually have about 3,458. on, you know, a singular pole. So we actually have about 3,458 fixtures total. On the flip side of that, we have 1,518 We Energies-owned lights for a total of about 4,438 light poles. This is really an interesting graphic, I think, and something we should reflect on a bit. This shows where the city-owned lights are versus the We Energy's owned lights. And what this informs is our discussion about, well, do we want to replace all of the lights in the city, We Energies and city-owned, or convert them, I should say, or do we want to focus in on the city-owned lights that we can kind of control and maybe be a little more selective with the conversion of the We Energy's lights? So you'll see that a long, long stretch of, say, Ryan Road or Highway 100, probably a bad example, because I believe those are already LED lights, but you get the idea. 13th Street, there's long rows of We Energies lights. Maybe that's okay, and we want to maintain them, or just not deal with those right now. But then if you look to the, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but if you look to, and you guys know these neighborhood names better than me, but where their We Energies lights are a little more interspersed with the city-owned lights, maybe we want to look at just focusing in on those and handling those long runs of roadway lighting that We Energies lights, like 13th Street and Ryan and those types of stretches. Handle those later. Again, to promote consistency within, you know, more or less within a neighborhood. You can see a couple of examples on the west side of the community here, where you have city-owned lights in some instances, and then it switches over to We Energies. Or maybe this is a better example in this neighborhood here. You know, the ingress into the subdivision is all city-owned lights, and then you get into the We Energies. Well, maybe those are the places where we want to promote more of a consistency and focus our efforts there. The next three slides show the different types of mounting of the apparatus, and I just wanted Ted to kind of articulate the direct-bury options that we have out there with 791 light poles, and why that's, you know, if not problematic now, definitely be problematic over time.
Well, like Andrew was saying, we do have 791 of the direct-bury poles. The problems that we're finding with the direct-bury poles, although you're not seeing them fall down all over town, the problem that we're having with them is, if you look at the diagram, you'll notice the hole that's about midway down in the ground. Those are directly across from each other, and what's happening is, as time goes on and that, it basically is weakening the pole. And so we're seeing a lot of those poles snap underground, and then when the wind gets them, you'll see them to start to lean. You know, we're not replacing, you know, 50 a month or anything like that, but we're certainly seeing at least 10 or 15 now annually that we're changing out. When we do change them, we change them out with the T-base mounted poles. Those are our preferred poles. The only thing that we're concerned about is if we don't do anything with these now, are we going to have brand-new lights on them and have them start to break and fall and fail in neighborhoods, and then we'll have to take the LED lights off of them, you know, try to make sure that we don't break them, store them, put the new poles up. I mean, but it is a lot of money, and we may want to look at possibly looking at some of the oldest neighborhoods, and, you know, maybe picking a number and doing a partial conversion on these. So, I mean, we have a lot of options, and as a group and a team, we had a lot of questions for you.
That's the kind of the direct-bury dilemma. We'll coin that term moving forward. And then a couple other amounts that we have in the T-base mount that we would like to go to. We won't spend a lot of time on that, obviously. Through this process, we also identified some faulty underground wiring in a couple subdivisions in Forest Hill Heights and Pioneer Estates, looking at a $125,000 budget estimate for those issues. So, street lighting, as I mentioned earlier, street lighting, there's a ton of opportunities with street lighting. And we will, with the apparatus on top of the selected fixture, we will kind of preserve, at least to today's greatest and latest and greatest technology, preserve these opportunities. You see those opportunities here, one through 13. At the end of this slideshow, for those that are really curious, not wanting to get home until like the bottom of the eighth inning, you can, there's a little bit of a description on each one of those. And of course, it's covered in the white paper itself. Ted, would you mind covering a little bit? We have been looking at a specific lighting fixture, which is, again, covered in the written analysis. We also went to the step of piloting that in a certain area in the city. And Ted, if you could address that process and the performance.
Sure. The business park that is located off of 27th Street. We started out, actually, with a pilot of 10 lights. We've added to that recently, but our pilot program did start with 10 lights. And one of the things, these have the smart lighting technology on them. So out of the box, I mean, you can do some of the standard things, dim, you know, and that, and get the energy used by each light, which we are monitoring. What we've started doing recently with them, because we've been getting trained on how to use the lights with the smart technology, is to take some of the lights and run them at 100%, and some of them were running at 50% or actually 75%. And then some of the lights in the pilot program were running at 75% until midnight, and then dropping them to 50% between midnight and 4:00 AM, and then bringing them back up again, and looking at the energy that they use. One of the reasons we added to this is because our sample size really isn't big enough to get, you know, I mean, I guess you can do the math with it, but we're trying to get some good numbers to see how that works and what the cost savings may be on it. The one thing that we have noticed, and I was able to go out and look at them both at about 10 o'clock at night, and then one time I was lucky enough to be around to see them after midnight once this summer. And to be honest with you, even the ones that are at 50%, you really don't notice the difference. So I think even some of the savings in that that we've seen in the overall presentation and the numbers that we're putting on there, I think those are pretty conservative, and I actually think we could do better.
Kind of our current inventory, the current lay of the land on the city-owned lighting, you see there's certain types of features here, or excuse me, fixtures, not features. The hat fixture to the left here, not so affectionate, I'm not so warm to that one. It's in my subdivision. They're definitely the oldest, predominantly the direct-bury poles, the hat fixture that you see. Then there's the more decorative lighting, 616 of those in the middle there that you see, the finial on top. And then the more standard, I think you would call them roadway lighting, and all of the We Energy's owned lights are the style, at least to our knowledge, right? So those are the three within the community. And this is kind of a cool graphic where you can see the dispersal of all of those, of each of those three lights and where they are in the community, due to the good GIS programming and data input that we do here in the city. So again, on the Oak Creek lights, we currently spend about $199,000, call it, on those lights, the city-owned. If we were to convert to LED in a straight conversion, we would save roughly $135,000 annually on energy costs. Again, with all of the other benefits of reducing the carbon footprint and the smart lighting technology that we would preserve and have the opportunity to explore. We also, look, we also have a budget, at least in 2019, of $80,000 that we spend, and we call this kind of the knockdown fund, right? I think you're more familiar with that. We historically don't spend, you know, the full 80. We, that's not only the knockdown, it's obviously parts and those types of things. But we, you know, we think we can do better with just the LED, the less maintenance on the LED, we would do better and save some of that $80,000 annually as well, perhaps up to half. We typically only have between five and eight knockdowns, I think, Ted, a year, that are, you know, $2,500 to $4,000, give or take, to fix, right?
Well, we have a few more than that, but yeah, I mean, especially on snowstorms and that, we've seen up to five or six in a storm. But a lot of those are paid for by the drivers. So, I mean, there's maybe five or six that we get stuck with the tab for every year. That would be an accurate statement.
On the city side, and we'll get into more detail here with the payback model Ted has put together, $135,000 potentially. And again, like, all of these are pretty conservative. The total conversion, in order to kind of get at that savings, is $1.586 million. That's after a Focus on Energy grant of about $107,000. So Ted, if you would, just go through this kind of the science of this.
Sure.
And then also, make sure you mention the other kind of checks and balances we had with the Tanco and the Siemens audits as well.
Sure. We've actually, like Andrew said, we've had this analysis done by two other vendors. Tanco Lighting and then Siemens looked at this as well. Siemens was substantially higher than what we were looking at. One of the main things for them was the cost of them running the program was quite a bit higher. Tanco Lighting was a lot more aggressive, and their number was lower than ours. And, you know, we chose to go with these numbers. We feel that it's a conservative number, but we think that it's a reasonable number to look at. The way that we went through this was, if you look at the number of lights that we currently have, which came to, it was about 3,500. Can't remember the exact number right off the top of my head, but this is, what this is, is we're using $550 a light for a replacement and/or retrofit. We feel, based on the light fixture that we selected, this would allow us about $200 to install the lights, which we think is more than adequate to do that. When you go down, and that's for the $1.6 million, when we talked to Focus on Energy, this was an actual dollar amount that we were given, you know, based on the amount of energy that we would be saving. If you can see, our annual KWH saving was 1.356 million kilowatts. So based on that is $107,000 that we would get for the reimbursement rebate, which would take our total net project costs to $1.586 million. And then this is just simple math. With the rebate, you would have an 11.69 year payback. Without it, 12.48. That would be if the rebate dried up and went away. I mean, we're not guaranteed to receive that, and, you know, the state could discontinue that anytime. And then, actually, if you drop down to the next, under simple payback years on the next category, that is taking into consideration, if we looked at half of that, the funding for the annual maintenance, we wanted to be conservative, and we only used $40,000 a year for the reduction in maintenance, and that would take our payback down again with the rebate to 9.03 years and without it to 9.64 years. So that's kind of the way that we went about getting some of the project costs for this.
And again, just for our comfort, for your comfort, we had two different firms kind of provide a payback model after inventorying kind of our lighting system, and we're right in the middle of those two. So I think for everybody moving forward, that's a good level of comfort that we're pretty conservative with those numbers. And we think we will do better, but we want to be conservative. So that's the city side, the We Energy's own side. If we were to, if we were, we spend about $286,900 on We Energies lighting. The way that works, and I know the council's likely familiar with this, we charge a, we are charged a per pole, per month, kind of lease maintenance agreement. And the cost for that is $15.75 per pole, per month. If we were to kind of just wash the deck and treat these as LED-owned lights by the city and put that into our conversion, we would save about $241,000 if these were our lights. Unlike many other states, especially on the East Coast, where state legislatures actually provide for the opportunity for local units of government to buy the lights from the utility company. We do not have that in Wisconsin. And as you can see, and probably for obvious reasons, We Energies has zero interest in selling these lights to us. So that's really the dilemma, right, we were talking about earlier, where a good chunk of lighting in the city is We Energies. We don't necessarily control that as much as we do our own lights, so we have to work together with We Energies to come up with a plan. So if they do have, they have given us an opportunity to, or at least an analysis or an option to take a look at. And Mike, if I could rely on you, I know you and Matt had done the legwork with We Energies folks. Really, this is a work in progress, is the moral of the story. But if you could share kind of where we got to, in terms of this analysis, at least.
Sure. Yep. So that second component of the lighting throughout the city is the We Energies-owned lights, in which they lease them to us. So that's 1,518 lights is the current total. And they do have a policy where they will change out the lights at the request of the municipalities, and that charge is $175 per light. And Andrew, do you have that table, that sheet? What you see on the table, there's a year, there's 20 years represented here. There's a year 1A and 1B. 1A is the $265,650. That is 15.18 times 175. So that's that initial cost for the change-out. And then year 1B is basically the first year. And so what they do is, they kind of get you two ways, the $175 per light, and then they charge you a higher fee for the first eight, seven years, excuse me, for seven years. And that's what you see represented in column B, LED costs, $331,349. That's the cost, which is currently, that is at $18.19 per light. That is actually more. That's higher than existing high-pressure sodium lights, the 1575, but they do that as a way to pay, kind of pay themselves back for that conversion.
You see what they do there? They make you pay a premium on the LED fixture in that same kind of lease maintenance agreement for a period of time. They charge you 175 per fixture upfront as a one-time, I call this a setup charge, but they then increase for seven years by almost three bucks, $2.50, the monthly rate. And then after the seven years, that's when you really realize that savings, because the monthly charge goes all the way down to, right now, $10 per month, essentially.
Yeah. So then what you see represented in the tables is, if you look at those last two columns, what's your cost savings? When it's a negative number, you're not saving anything yet. And also, then, of course, the cumulative cost savings, that number gets up there quite a ways, approaching $600,000. At year eight is when you start seeing the savings coming in, and coming in at a pretty good rate. You're saving almost $105,000 per year. So you see that number, that cumulative cost savings come down fairly rapidly. And then sometime in year 13 is when you get on the positive side of that. And so we carried that out to 20 years. And by 20 years, you are ahead almost $800,000. So significant money. uh, significant money, um, but that's a long time to wait, 20 years. So. But once you, but once you're there, you're there. And I mean, I, I think the writing's on the walls that LED lights is where you're going to be. Um, whether you do it all at once or if you do it in, in pieces.
I think the good part of the story with the We Energies, there is a silver lining to that. Obviously over time you see it gets to be some really healthy savings for our taxpayers. But we still, at least today's model and what we know to be true into the future, is that lease agreement is, you know, it's not like our own lights where in 15, 20 years, we're going to have to go through and be replaced, uh, you know, that will have failure rates. Well, with the We Energies lights, we don't worry about the failure. They, they're charged with the maintenance in that lease. So there's no additional costs um, above and beyond what the lease rate is.
Are those numbers locked in?
Well, that, that was a, that was, thank you. I was going to bring this point up. Um, these numbers, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, on both the We Energies and the city owned side, we use the, a straight line approach from today's costs and what we know to be true today into the future. Energy like healthcare, like as we learned tonight, recycling commodities, the cost to deal with that and the, are, are ever escalating. So we are not only mitigating some of those future increases with this potential conversion, um, but we are probably looking at a more um, sustainable budget picture, I would, I would think. We're, we're not capturing that in the, in the payback, um, but we know that the costs that we use in terms of a snapshot in time today, we know those only will escalate, meaning you know, we're mitigating those increases as well. I shared this with uh, the small leadership team. I said, you know, if we take out a bond or whatever the financing model is and in 12 years, when we're, when our bond is paid and then we're breaking even, if we're still paying the costs that we were paying in 2019, isn't that a, not a lot of communities are going to be able to boast that, right? So I think you can see the strength in the financial modeling of this, that it does make sense. Your access to capital and all other things equal makes sense as well.
Andrew?
Sure.
Um, are we mandated or required or somehow held a, held to some sort of agreement that we have to have We Energy lights where they are right now? Say for example, Clement Avenue where I live, there are all, all those lights are on the east side of the street, all We Energy lights. Can we, can we say, we don't want you to light that road anymore and then put our LED lights on the west side of the street? I mean, just, just food for thought, just, just asking.
I would, I would say that that's valid. Um, what, what, We Energies doesn't have its own lighting program. I believe every single light that is in any community, this is the way it was in a previous community I worked in, is if you guys feel you want to light, here's the maintenance agreement for the light and it's 1575 a pole and we'll, we'll be happy to place it for you. And light said thoroughfare. Um, it, it gets a little more challenging and well, let's darken the side that we pay more for. And then, you know, and then operationalize the other side and you really get the same benefit maybe. That, that gets into extending our own underground grid then, right? You guys know this better than I do, so please chime in. But there's a capital outlay associated with that as well. It's not just there for us to tap into. That's where it gets a little more challenging. So that's the, let's call that the We Energies dilemma. So also included in the analysis of course is how do we pay for this? There's a lot of options. Most of these, with the exception of the ESCO and the performance contracting, most of these were the exact same opportunities that existed in terms of funding in the CIP funding analysis that we uh, that we talked about last summer. Again, the, the, the central one being, or the most, most probably impactful, I would say, uh, is the creation of a special charge on the property tax bill. You'll learn all about that on October 15th. Our consultants will give a presentation. Uh, and then we can kind of pick and choose, you know, what, what we want to do if we want to move forward to project implementation. Uh, number one, and ESCO is, is a pretty interesting concept in the energy world. Uh, and ESCO is short for Energy Service Company. Uh, we've talked to a few uh, and we're still seeking one that will actually provide the capital. Uh, the ones we've talked to to date, uh, really we're, we're in this, it's really performance contracting because we still have to access our own capital. They're just guaranteeing the energy savings so we can pay back the funding vehicle that we choose. We know there are companies out there that actually fund the projects and pay themselves back with the savings, probably at a premium, you know, probably higher than what we could borrow money for. So if we can identify those firms that actually provide the capital outlay for us upfront and we can save on borrowing for the project, we will definitely take a look if that makes sense in the long term. You know, clearly we don't want to pay six or eight percent to access their capital. Um, so we have to take a look at that and really seek out those firms. And then of course, you know, one we'll, we'll likely come back to is, or two we'll likely come back to are, you know, municipal bonding and then funding through the CIP. Uh, similar to the capital improvement analysis, funding analysis that we showed you last year. There's a really unique opportunity for us moving forward that we're strategizing uh, regarding the use of TID 7 to pay some debt that it was always intended to pay for Drexel Avenue interchange and Drexel Avenue corridor. Uh, so there might be some opportunities to use some of that uh, levy funding in addition to the energy savings that we'll see to help fund, help fund the project. So again, the summary of project costs and then, you know, really it, I, I think to summarize this, I know this is getting a little long. To summarize this, what do you want to do about We Energies lights? Do we want to get after that? Do we want to be more selective? Uh, and do you want to include the direct berry, uh, the direct berry capital investment in this initial project? Or somehow take that as it comes, um, and just do more of an LED conversion with those, those other rather minor wiring and cabinet projects? That's what we would be seeking from the council tonight. And if, if we want to short circuit this a little bit, we can also frame some of these discussions up uh, next time when we're talking about the, the special charge funding option too. Want to shortcut this tonight a little bit.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. That was a lot of information, a lot of good information. Uh, myself and Ken, we had access to this just last week. And if you had time to read it and if it's of interest to you, it was a really well-done study. I want to thank the staff that put this all together. Uh, tremendous work to, to throw this all together. Ted, your people, Mike, uh, everybody involved. This is somewhere we, where we should be going. We should be moving forward. Things are changing. We talked about in recycling. We should be on the cutting edge of this. And as Andrew said, if we're still realizing the same costs as things change, then again, all the rates are based on current day. Things are going to change, even as we're paying back and it'll get us into that We Energies, what do you call it, dilemma? Um, as to what we do with it. Um, as technology changes, they're going to be forced to change too. So we have to take that into consideration over the next 10 years. Um, I'll, right now I'll just kind of keep my thoughts down and I'll let the council kind of weigh in. I know it was a lot, but anybody that wants to start, just let me know. Everybody, Chris? Nope, Steve?
I think, I just had a question, question with regards to those um, decorative lights and the other, the hat stuff. Those tops would have to be replaced to, to, I don't, if you mentioned it, I'm sorry if I missed it, but that would be a, a cost with this too? You can't just throw LED stuff into those other, those old fixtures?
I, I'll defer to Ted on that, but you brought up a point that I failed to mention. We really with the Cree lighting, we were only piloting the roadway type lighting, the pretty standard one that you, you know, we were not going to want in every residential subdivision. We still would have to select a more decorative style for, you know, other, other areas. We do want to limit it, right? We don't want to have 10 different styles out there. But Ted, you know, there, we've, we talked about this, there are conversion kits, right? That you can, you can use the similar cabinet or box fixture, if you want to call it that, uh, and just let retrofit, but that, I don't think that's what we're getting at here.
I mean, we could retrofit all of those. I don't think we would want to. Uh, there's a couple of different options for those. I mean, one, we could take the existing pole that, that we have and they make arms for those. Uh, we could put an arm on, on those on the top and actually use those and they would become more of, I wouldn't call them roadway lighting. I would call them street lighting. It would be very similar to what you see um, going down like say Sixth Avenue, right over here, um, right on the side of Woodman's and uh, and that going up to Liberty. Um, so uh, not necessarily uh, you know, a decorative fixture, but um, but a nice fixture. Um, and then there's actually um, other uh, more decorative fixtures that, that could be put on those. Um, as you start to get into more of the decorative ones, you start increasing your costs as well though.
And then that, cost of that isn't, that'd be in the same category of you don't know how much it would cost to replace the pole. So it just would be an unknown cost. Added on to the conversion costs, right? I mean, it's, I just, I-
No, I, I mean, if we replace the pole, I, I mean, we would make a decision on, on I guess, what fixture we would want to put on there as, as a group.
Ted, just clarify, we, we costed these all out as kind of a, of a roadway, a standard fixture though. We're in, we know we'll have some areas where, you know, they might be a little more expensive if we wanted to do something more decorative. But we've, we've, we've put a number together of about 550 for the whole enchilada. So there's probably some room there because we don't think the roadway type is going to be that expensive. So maybe there's an offset there.
There, there's a, some wiggle room. I mean, uh, we could um, have a mixture of the more roadway type uh, fixtures and possibly some decorative ones. Um, I, I don't think that our budget would allow for every single one of them to be a um, a decorative fixture. Uh, we didn't allot for that in the, in the cost analysis, but certainly some could be.
Thanks.
Uh, Mike?
If uh, I don't know if I missed this or not, but if you take the most aggressive approach on replacing throughout the city, the whole Monty, what, what are we looking at as a timeframe?
Yes.
Which leads to another question I have, and I'll let you answer that one.
And Mike chime in, you know, I haven't had the discussions with, with We Energies like Mike has, but, but you know, they're not going to staff us replacing 1,518 lights, you know, in the next six months and just do that work consistently. So the timeframe is a little unknown. Is that, is that a two-year process with We?
I did, I did um, have a conversation with them fairly recently and, and they indicated really a two-man crew could take care of that within uh, five to six months.
Well, that's great then. That's news.
Um, and they also offered that they could hire a contractor to uh, supplement that if we needed it done quicker. And I said, I don't have major heartburn over five to uh, six months, especially if it's uh, uh, doesn't increase that 175 per uh, fixture cost. You know, if they hire a contractor, they may be asking us to contribute some more uh, front costs there. So um, was pretty happy to hear that. Now, you know, everything else, um, that's not uh, Ted, I don't want to speak for you, but that's not city crews doing that work. That, that would be um, hiring contractors, bidding process, uh, uh, plans, um, you know, all of that. So um, probably could structure some, some, some large projects, you know, take, take like the southeast part of the, the city, uh, then the northeast and, and move from region to region and, and do some, some larger projects. But that would be uh, I can't imagine, it wouldn't be multiple years to, to do all that.
So if we went to a special fee charge on the tax bill, uh, would it be immediately citywide or how these lights get replaced or how would that work? The reason I'm asking you that is could this be parceled out into maybe a, a two-year program? Where if it, I'm looking at this thing as benefiting the whole city in the end, okay? And if we didn't have to borrow immediately for the full amount and you assess the whole city, citywide, and you stretch this now, this thing out for two years, is that even been discussed? That we could, it could be like more of a pagel thing? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah. Um, I, I think anything's really kind of on the table as we look forward first. We have to establish what we want to accomplish.
If, really tonight, and why we coined this as a draft analysis, and this is a check-in, right? So there is a lot more coordination and thought process that needs to go into actually implementing a project. This is a theoretical project here at this point. So I think some of those more detailed questions would be for what I would, would argue would be the next step here if the council wants to move forward and to continue to explore this is really pull a team together of these types of folks that are going to be implementing and coordinating the project and figure out exactly how we want to do that. Sure, that's on the table.
That way you wouldn't have to borrow upfront for the full amount. You parcel it out for two years. Uh, if you make it a citywide assessment, I don't know how that would go over with the taxpayers. That's something I guess we could discuss, but uh,
You're right, Mike. That's not a popular subject, but it's, we really have to kind of get into that conversation at some point. I think this is a good stepping point for it. It could be something that's sunset, once we decide we, you know, we got the initial.
You know, if you take a section of the city and you replace, you divide the city into four sections or five or six or whatever, it's going to benefit the general public in a lot of areas, not just that particular subdivision. So if you charge across the board for the fee, I could see that maybe be eligible. I don't know.
Correct. You know, a lot of things will go into that. Um, as you do this, if, if you get in and just this is all theoretical, you go to buy the fixtures. Of course, the more you buy, the better discount you're going to get if you do it within a certain amount of time. Uh, of course, the energy payback gets more, the more you do. That helps us. So uh, these are questions that got to go out. I think Andrew framed this right. This is really just a draft and uh, it's your first real kick at it as we send it back to the staff to explore it a little deeper now.
We'd be looking for alderman participation on a working group. Everybody's hands went up.
Yeah. Uh, no, and, and again, this, this isn't the funnest subject in the world as, as you're going through change. Like Steve brought up with the subdivision lights from the hat fixtures, they're going to change. They may look more like a roadway fixture, which you're not accustomed to that look, but they will accomplish the same thing and actually do more. Uh, Ted brought up the dimming aspect of it and things of that nature. That's where some savings can really be realized going forward. Uh, I think it was put together rather conservatively, you know, given costs, like you said, taking them down to 50% and you consult with the police at what times that could be done and what areas, uh, it could be substantial savings for some ways we never thought of.
Andrew, if you want to volunteer, I volunteer. My arm goes up.
Ken, anything?
Thanks. Um, are you confident We Energies, I mean, their 175 dollar charge for their fixture, is that a fixture we've chosen that the fixture they deem they want?
This is, there, there are varying fees, you know, for this analysis. We, we chose um, the 175. I know that there's some uh, fixtures that we have that um, uh, would be perhaps just the 150. So I, I guess my point is for this analysis, I think we were a conservative enough that I think the numbers uh, would only be better than what's shown here.
That's, that's using the fixture that We Energies chooses in our cost savings analysis or the fixture we chose or?
It's a, it's a fixture that we chose that we thought that this is going to, the, the bulk of the fixtures that are being replaced would be best be um, suited to be replaced with this such fixture.
Accepting the fixture we chose?
Yes.
They are?
Oh, this is um, uh, the, the We Energies LED.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is We Energies going to accept that or are they going to choose their own fixture and?
It has to be a fixture that they deal with. Okay. But um, I guess I was misunderstanding the question. Yeah, there's, there's different styles of fixtures.
So is our, is our cost savings and energy usage calculation on their fixture or?
It is on their fixture.
It's on their fixture?
Yes.
Um, it, sorry, whole different.
Ken, just remember though, there, there's no energy calculation on there. It's 19, 10 per month per pole down.
We pay energy usage though.
That's included in that.
Is it?
Yes.
All right. I guess we don't care.
Yeah, exactly. It's one fee for, one fee for uh, energy charge and maintenance. So.
Uh, all my questions were answered. I just want to thank the staff for all the efforts they put into this. Thank you.
There is one fellow.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Ken.
Um, Alderman Kokowski brought up about um, we have these three different kind of fixture styles. We have the fixture we like, this Cree, Cree light. Um, but it doesn't sound, I don't know, I, I get the impression that it's not mutually exclusive. You can't do one or the other in terms of the fixture and the pole. other in terms of the fixture and the pole I don't know if that's it seems like if you if you're going to do the fixture you're going to do the pole can they can they be truly separated or are you going to have some oddball looking fixture on top of a pole?
Um well I I mean there are um they're all aluminum poles and uh I mean the one thing that would be odd is you're going to have an old pole with a brand new arm on it with a brand new light so I guess in that sense.
What about the decorative I mean I'm looking at the decorative one I'm thinking you put something ultra modern on top of that that's going to look stupid.
Picture picture well you don't have the subdivision there but you'll be paying for it anyways.
We're in a row we're ready yeah.
But if you take one of the hat fixtures on on the spun aluminum pole and you put one of the decoratives there I mean you have to get it in silver to even look only makes sense to go to a silver fixture and eventually it would weather and blend but.
Actually put a black one on a silver pole and it didn't look horrid.
No.
For those for those for those types for those types of fixtures whatever you get is.
I I suppose.
Those aren't very old.
It it seems to me that the the hat the the light poles with the hat fixture are round but the decorative ones are not round.
Oh they are if you look if you look at town square they're actually circle type.
It's a difference.
Oh because our subdivision has both kinds of I I thought the pole was a little different but okay.
I guess I just had one question who would for the city uh work who would be doing that work would it be our city crews or would that be something we would farm out?
We we would look at a.
We could explore that there's advantages to both cost savings of course when a contractor does the work there's warranties and guarantees and workmanship and another thing the LED lights just to mention this they looked at it years ago the LED technology wasn't where it was um our inspector you know our building inspectors weren't knocked out by them um they've greatly improved and so has the warranties so that's that's been a great bit of help so uh just little food for thought as as you look at this and on the we energies replacement I think Andrew made the point spectacularly um you know on long stretches such as maybe Ryan or is that Nicholson yes Nicholson it's all we energies I public wouldn't know the difference they're there they're in place but if you take places like Cedar Hills which is a subdivision on the far uh northwest side and if you take like twentieth street those areas would probably be make sense to do they're small they're concentrated they match rest of the city um and there you know Cedar Hills is one of the older subdivisions I'm sure um we have some failure rates going on up there and and those are the things I think we should look at selectively on the we energy stuff that's that's my opinion on it so Andrew just pulled pulled it up so you can kind of see it on the far upper left-hand corner of your screen that's Cedar Hills um most of that looks like we energy lights um city owned everywhere around it twentieth street's a good example coming down from McKeon so those would probably be areas and you can obviously see some of the dark subdivisions you got Apple Creek there they have no lights so again we're not proposing to put them in those subdivisions.
I'm just wondering if you guys have any strong opinion on the direct battery pole situation I'm kind of I really don't know what to make of that.
They they were put in at the time because they were functional they were economical and that's bottom line with them uh the wires go into the bottom they come up through the pole but Ted said that as the soil loosens up wind starts to move them and then the aluminum gets brittle and breaks I probably for the cost of doing it you look at the ones with failing grids there are really some problems and you do them as a per pole base at the cost of one point two.
I think we really take that.
Or two point one I'm sorry.
Yeah two point one I think we we really take that as a separate discussion right because we can get the benefit.
I would agree.
There there's no mass failure right now so why would we overcorrect?
That's exactly it.
Because he said there's what right dozen or two dozen a year which is not a I mean it's a pity in the backseat but it's not a crisis.
Maybe we keep our eighty thousand dollar budget as opposed to counting forty thousand dollars to you know to savings and do X amount.
From your standpoint Andrew there's really not a clear is there a clear decision or clear kind of dividing on that?
Well I I don't I don't I wouldn't I'm not going to advocate that we in one fell swoop spend two point one on that's such a big there's no return on that other than we're doing it all at once and we don't have to address them.
Yeah aesthetically you get a you get a pole immense.
It can be done on a per pole basis as they begin to sell.
Unless some other contractor from the outside made a compelling case for it.
Um you can see the the we energies lights are very concentrated down in the fourth district there and it's a lot of U light.
I think that's good enough direction and again we can talk about funding options and that next time when we get the presentation from from PAA I know we're going a little long here so I think we got what we needed tonight please you know if you haven't already thoroughly read that analysis and let us know I mean that you you know you you go over that work so much and so often that there's certain things that you miss that maybe makes sense to you because you've read it a hundred times and another you know fresh set of eyes on it always helps improve the the work product so.
Correct and it says complicated for the general public it really isn't just like changing a light bulb out on going out in the city and changing every light bulb in the city it doesn't quite work that way there's a complicated thing going on with the grid very much so.
One last point kind of to to that mayor is that city on lights versus the we energy lights I don't know that most citizens realize that uh the difference between them that that we take care of our light they they just look at the lights in the city and they're all city lights so when it goes out they.
Good point they call the city you're right again um personally without this map I probably I couldn't distinguish them either so good point Chris.
I'll give you a an easy way to distinguish them if they're wood they're we energies if they're.
Well that way yes.
If they're metal yeah and it actually is a good thing that uh the citizens contact us because uh we do put in a a CRA a citizen's request for action on them and that actually goes to we energies um they don't go and ride around town looking for for burnt out lights if we don't report them they don't get fixed.
No you're right but beyond the wood poles if they're road lights they're using aluminum poles with double fixtures so.
Correct.
Correct alright thank you guys appreciate it um holy cow that was just four alright let's move on to five that is a consideration of a mayor appointment to the celebrations commission so if everybody please take a look I'm recommending Kyle Colehouse of one forty west Rainbow Ridge. Any questions I'd be glad to answer or motion please.
Okay we'll move to concur with the mayor's appointment of Kyle Colehouse one forty west Rainbow Ridge of the celebrations committee the Philly three-year term vacancy expiring April two thousand twenty.
That was Gail's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Item six is engineering and it's consider a motion to reject the bid uh for the phase two project in Oakview subdivision Mike when you are ready.
Thank you mayor so um we got authorization uh back in the spring to proceed on with the uh private property infiltration and inflow reduction uh project in Oakview subdivision and we um proceeded on by I've got a graphic up here on the screen uh by sending notices to uh the two areas of the subdivision that we we thought uh could be helped uh by this project uh and with the intent on uh doing one one uh portion of the subdivision that's uh group B uh was this year uh group A uh was proposed then to happen in two thousand twenty so basically we put notices out before we even decided we put notices out to to both groups introducing the project um and then asking them to reply with uh their interest and uh group B kind of won out uh to be the first project to go so we went ahead and and uh proceeded with the inspections of the sanitary laterals with the uh close circuit uh television uh and uh recordings and uh then went ahead and designed the project based on what we saw of these two groups you can see there's twenty-five parcels of one and twenty-nine in the other um we uh ended up looking at seventeen laterals in uh in the eastern portion of subdivision group B and uh based on what was seen in in the videos we were able to uh there were nine laterals that were uh designed for repairs um and of the eight then that uh uh were not done three of them had to do with a a sanitary sewer main issue uh so that was uh kind of left with the utility um uh with the water sewer utility uh to deal with and then the other ones were basically functional so did not need repair uh at any rate so we went out for we advertised for bids we did get three bids uh back on the thirtieth of August and there were some issues with the bids basically the bids were evaluated on one the unit prices total unit price uh the total bid price based on uh contract units and also on pre-qualification um criteria and um you can see from the bids that we received Donovan Services was the low bidder they were one twenty-four six forty-nine and they had some errors in their bids um in in their bid and errors such that we were going to have to throw out that bid and we did and then we thought let's look at the uh second lowest bidder Mid City Corp um through all of that um our consultant was reviewing the qualification documents and it was determined that none of the three had complete uh qualification documents so talked about it as a team that would be that was the utility that was engineering that was MMSD and then the uh engineering consultant OTI and really came to the conclusion that we had to reject the bids so that's the recommendation here uh that we would not be able to justify um awarding it to any of these three bidders and what we would like to do then is to proceed on with the group A uh inspections um as soon as possible and then um design those repairs and go out again for bids and we would expect that we'd be able to do that uh earlier on in in two thousand twenty um and furthermore we want to uh develop a better pre-qualification uh process so that we don't even have people submitting bids until they are approved what we had was was their qualifications came in with their bids this time and um so uh we we think with that we we should be able to get decent bids and qualified bidders and uh we figure we'd also maybe be able to explore some alternate bidding options uh as it was if we were to award uh to the second lowest bidder we were still spending over um fifteen thousand dollars per household and you know I guess in my mind you can almost dig up the laterals and replace them wholly uh when you start talking about prices like that so these are some of the things that we want to take back with our group reconvene and uh and and proceed kind of in the in the fashion that I had outlined.
Question go ahead. Is all MMSD a project of some sort of the timing wise are they comfortable?
Yes they were on board with this decision so. Uh we were a little over fifteen thousand per lateral one thirty-six hundred thirty-six thousand and change divided by that the nine laterals.
Thanks for briefing me on this uh before the meeting it makes sense that if you don't you know we can't uh reward these bids responsibly the bids were out of whack so I mean there's no way I agree with staff we should just move on and combine the two and wait till next year.
Further discussion?
I'm going to make a motion to reject the bids for the PII reduction phase two project in Oakview subdivision.
Give a second roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Item made is consideration of a motion to install additional electrical service for Lakeview Vista Park uh pavilion exterior uh public works Ted.
Yep um uh we noticed um this year when we were doing a lot of the setup work and stuff like that for the various events at at Lake Vista Park that um our exterior electrical is severely inadequate for for some of the things that we're trying to do down there um currently there's only a twenty amp service on the outside of the building uh that's not even adequate enough to run uh uh the beer uh cooler that they were trying to run let alone to have bands and you know different lighting and other functions that they want down there uh what this would do is actually this would run a complete separate uh service that would just uh be for the exterior uh so uh we would have adequate power uh to do all of the different things that we need and then be able to expand in the future if we need to.
Questions for Ted?
Makes sense right twenty amp service now is nothing.
Oh makes perfect sense and they're putting a hundred and twenty-five out there and they'll have an assortment of three-phase and single-phase stuff there for bands and whatever they need so.
They're uh we're responsible for the restoration of the town is right?
Beg your pardon?
We're responsible then for restoration up there?
We would be yeah uh we would have uh people power do the work and we would do the restoration.
I I'm trying to picture how far away from the building is this kind of where the tent is usually set up east of the east of the pavilion?
Well we would actually have power going out from the back of the building and it would run up the the side on the on the north side uh go underneath the sidewalks over there and we would if if you're familiar with where the patio is we would actually put um outlets along that one wall that is uh on both the east and west side of that wall and then we would have uh some of the boxes where that tent goes and we would actually like to push a conduit underneath the the trail there and put an additional box on the far side of that so if we ever wanted to expand out further uh we wouldn't have to monkey around with the sidewalks and stuff like that so um uh we think this would take care of uh probably our needs for at least the the near future you know.
Ted that box on the thing you know he's underneath the sidewalk how much capacity does that give you for have you ever had anything bigger for fourth of July or anything like that or?
Oh no we would run we would run that big enough the two boxes where those tents are set up we would have those set up with not only one-ten outlets in them for convenience outlets but we would also run power out there so we could run our spider boxes and those would be uh the fifty amp uh boxes so I mean the those would be plenty for a band or something like that we currently use those out here at the at the square when they have bands and we we never have problems with them.
Single-phase and three-phase you said?
Yes yeah.
Okay. I'm surprised we didn't get this uh catch this when we were building but.
Unfortunate but yeah.
But it is what it is and it's needed for sure.
Um I guess my only question is they'll probably bore uh they're probably only going a foot deep but they're not going anywhere that's limited to the cap.
They will be at over some areas where the cap is um the the cap is over eighteen inches uh so we will be at um a foot or less uh we'll be enough to make sure that we are are within code compliance and that and we'll actually have uh uh probably Sue from the city engineering to to probably watch the job and make sure that we don't have any problems with the with the job and make sure that we don't have any problems with, with the cap and that as we're doing the project.
Okay, no further questions? Motion?
I want to make a motion to approve the installation of additional electrical service for the Lake Vista Park Pavilion exterior area to be installed by PPR Power in the amount of $21,350.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Brings us to item nine, which is the license committee. I turn it over to Alderman Kukowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody has received a copy of the common council report. Attached to that is the minutes from the most recent meeting. I'll point out that item number two talks about the granting of a reserve Class B license. I am not familiar with this new establishment. However, I'll point out that had there been any problems with the, the application, it would have come before the license committee. I note that 928 East Rossin Avenue is in a small business area where Frankie's Restaurant is, the old Taekwondo, that, that set of buildings. So if you're familiar with Rossin Avenue, that's generally where that's at, so. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns with regard to either item two or the report in general? All right, seeing none then, Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests listed on the September 17, 2019 License Committee report.
Kuzakowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
And item 10 is our vendor summary report for August, I believe. So please take a look. Any questions? Please chime in and we'll direct it to the appropriate person. No other questions? Motion?
We'll move to approve the September 11, 2019 vendor summary report in the amount of $358,701.48. Kuzakowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Item 11 is to consider a motion to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to discuss Robert P. Fransway et al. versus City of Oak Creek, Milwaukee County Case Number 2018 CV 005151. And B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to consider the proposed term sheet between the City of Oak Creek and Highgate LLC for the properties at the northeast corner of I-94 and Drexel Avenue.
President Gail?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail will move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G to discuss Robert P. Fransway et al. versus City of Oak Creek. B, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to consider a proposed term sheet between the City of Oak Creek and Highgate LLC for the properties at the northeast corner of I-94 and Drexel Avenue. Kuzakowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
We will now convene in closed session and reconvene at its conclusion.
Kuzakowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Item 13, motion if necessary?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to approve a settlement agreement with Robert P. Fransway SGS, SGC LLC and Springbrook Development LLC regarding Milwaukee County Circuit Court Case Number 18 CV 5151 and authorizing the mayor to execute the same in behalf of the city subject to such modifications as approved by the city administrator and city attorney. Kuzakowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And that'll bring us to adjournment, but before we do, I would just like to let the city clerk tell us a little bit about the shred day coming up Saturday.
Certainly, Mayor. The Saturday at Oak Creek West Middle School, the city will be hosting a shred event. It includes all shredding material and recyclables, 9:00 AM till noon.
Great. Thank you very much. And that'll get us to adjournment.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Kuzakowski, go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Good night. Thank you for streaming us in.